Okay, at six thirty, we have a forum, a planning board meeting to order. And first up for general information, Mr. Dwyer?
Uh, we have Stacia Salvatore Roy.
Ms. Salvatore Roy, you're up.
We can come back to her.
Okay.
Uh, next is Catherine Glowatzky.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, uh, so I'm here on behalf of Valley Solar LLC in East Hampton. Uh, my name is Kate Glowatzky. Uh, I'm the permit administrator over there.
Did we see you when you're talking?
Oh, uh, yes, hold on, let me just.
Thank you.
Get the video, whoops, sorry about that. There we go. Hello. Um, so I'm here on behalf of Valley Solar to submit, um, a site plan review application for a ground mounted solar system at four twenty-five River, uh, River Drive.
Small scale ground mount.
Yes, correct. I emailed, uh, Bill all of the plans, some eighty odd page document, uh, PDF. Um, I also had, uh, three copies dropped off to the planning board office, a hard copy for you guys, a hard copy for the building department and a hard copy for the fire department. Um, I do have a fourth copy for the town clerk, um, that I will submit once I know what the filing fee is, uh, to go with that.
So, let's see, with the review lead time that we have to give that, we can't, I think we have to take it up at our first April meeting.
Okay.
Is that the old Tudor house?
Yes.
Well, it's funny how your member addresses from your childhood.
Yeah, um, they're putting up a ground mount. I think he just built a whole brand new house over there. Um, so been a whole process getting that set up. Um, and when is the first meeting in April, uh, calendars?
April fourth.
April fourth. Okay. Um, and will we receive like, uh, like an email invitation to that or does it just go on the agenda and we just show up to that meeting?
It will go on the agenda, you just show up.
Okay. Um.
This will be for the administrative review on April fourth.
Okay. Okay. Um, and when, uh, when do I need to submit the, uh, fee for that slash, when do we know when the fee for that is going to be determined? Is that at the administrative review?
No, let me, I'm working and looking at it right now, I just want to get, uh, small scale. I don't think there is an administrative review.
I don't think there is a fee for that one.
I don't, I don't think there is a fee for it. Because there's no legal advertising and there's no, uh, notice of a butters.
Oh, okay, great.
So it's just a matter of getting the information in with. Uh, yeah. There's, there's no special, there's no, there's no special permit required or just, just administrative review for that.
Okay, um, and should I hold off? I'm, I'm guessing I should hold off until after that meeting to get all the building permit materials together to submit on that?
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you can't really apply till we get, uh, the administrative review because one, one of the, part of the review is to go to the fire department and the building inspector and the police and they get to comment on it. And, um, once you get that, then you could go on the file through to the appropriate, uh, building. I'm not sure if you need another fire department formal review of the building inspector will advise you on that.
Yeah, I know the NFPA one, the twenty twenty-one regulations just came through with all new setbacks and stuff.
They did, they did, the whole building, the building code train changes drastically.
Yeah.
With the latest addition.
You know, it's, it's never boring.
Not in the state of Massachusetts.
No. Um, okay, uh, so that's on schedule for the review. Uh, is there any other action I need to take, uh, on that?
No, um, just get that, what is the, uh, first meeting in April, Bill, for that?
Uh, April fourth.
Okay. You have an electronic copy of the stuff, Bill?
Uh, I did get an electronic copy and I sent it around to everyone.
Okay, all right, okay, just haven't seen it yet, that's fine, I'll, I'll take a look. Okay. Okay, yeah, just show up at the hearing, we'll give you a copy of the agenda. And they'll give you the Zoom, Zoom, Zoom connection and you can explain at that time.
So there is a potential catch here, so look for the, the authorization for Zoom meetings expires March thirtieth.
Oh.
Thirty-first, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, there is, it is said to be extended, but, um, we haven't seen it, an extension yet. Last time it went really down to like the last minute.
Yeah.
Um, so it may end up being an in-person meeting.
Okay.
At a place to be determined. Uh, but it'll be in the agenda.
Okay, all right, uh, I'll keep an eye out for that, um, it'll be in the agenda. Um, and, uh, after the administrator review about how long, uh, does it take for a decision to that, for that to be made? I just want to keep the client.
As long as you have everything in order, you'll get a decision, most likely get a decision that night.
Okay.
And you could go to the building inspector the next day and file your stuff.
All right, amazing. Um, great, thank you guys so much.
Okay.
All right, have a nice night.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll loop back to, uh, Stacia Salvatore Roy. Did you have a question for the planning board or are you here for a public hearing?
You're on mute. You lost a picture, Ms. Salvatore Roy, you're still on mute. We'll give you a second. There we go. That, you're still muted.
So on, uh, my screen, uh, the mute button is in the lower left-hand corner, it's a microphone with a line across it and you click on that and you're unmuted.
You're still muted.
Yep. So, uh, maybe I can streamline this a little bit. If you are here for the public hearing that is scheduled for six forty-five, no.
You have some questions?
Okay.
In, in your, in your screen, if you move your mouse to the upper right corner of your picture, do you see a button that says mute? No. On the lower left corner of your screen, do you see a microphone?
She's actually here for a sign on Russell Street.
Well, she is.
Okay.
Okay.
No, that's the one that they need to, uh, move back. It was the, used to be had, uh, hasty fence.
What?
It used to be hasty fence and, uh, Mass DOT is making them move the sign. I sent you, Bill, I think last week, part of what Mass DOT gave them.
And you want to, you're, well, we'll do this, but we'll, we'll do this by a, a animation. We'll ask you the question, you nod your head, yes or no, okay? You want to move, you want us to keep the sign the same size? You just want to move it back? You want to move it back? I'm going to ask double stroke numbers, you nod your head, five feet? More than five feet? Ten feet? Ten, you want to move it back ten feet? Well, exactly ten feet more, within, within a few inches. Same sign moving back ten feet? Non-illuminated, except the external illumination, if any. Yes? Do you need really any approval from us then, Tom?
What it is, is that they, uh, were told by Mass DOT where to put her, remember like, uh, for the palm reader, which she came in?
Yeah.
So it's the same kind of scenario. Only thing is though, is the sign that they have now, they're just going to need to come for a sign cover out change because we didn't get a new sign permit for that particular new business. Um, but we just wanted to make sure that they're in the right, you know, where, where you guys would also, you know, want it to, that they step back enough.
I don't recall seeing anything come in on this.
I, I think it was Thursday.
So it'd be from, an email from you?
Yes, an email from me that shows the location that Mass DOT gave them. And so did your husband send a email to Bill with the sign, the picture of the sign?
I don't see anything from you on Thursday.
Neither Thursday or Friday. Yes, he sent me Friday, that they sent.
Yeah, I told him it's just a formality, I didn't think there'd be a problem, but I figured to, I'd just run it by you.
I mean, I only guessed if you're moving the sign back ten feet, same sign, same kind of illumination external as today, and if it, if the building inspector is good with it and the planning board, I doubt we have an issue with it. I don't even think you need our approval.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to kind of be just, I believe, as the, uh, palm reader, by the looks of it.
Okay, I mean, does anybody disagree with what I'm saying?
No.
I mean.
It's a go.
Yeah. Okay, if the building inspector is good, the planning board is good because there's really no change except for location.
So, Stacia, um, you just have to, I told your husband just to apply for the permit just for the, uh, new sign change on that, the face of it, and that's it.
Okay.
What's the address, what's the address for this?
Oh. Two.
Two fifty-seven, is it?
No. No, it's two forty-seven, it's two forty-two.
Which you got to think, two, four?
Forty.
Twenty.
Two forty-three?
We're close.
Okay, that's good. We can do mine after all.
Okay.
Very good, thank you, good luck. Okay.
Uh, Denise Barstow-Mans.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm here navigating the ever-changing entertainment license. Um, so Barstow's Dairy Storm Bakery has applied, or we went to renew our entertainment license, but we were told the need to reapply. Um, so that is what I'm doing.
The, we're working on a zone or possibly zone or entertainment bylaw to address some of the issues that have arisen, um, on this. It'll probably be on a town meeting warrant for the annual town meeting. In the meantime, I don't think we want to hold you up. When does your license expire or does it, does it do?
It needs, my understanding of that, at the beginning of each year, needs to be, I need to pay a hundred dollars to get the entertainment license for that year.
Okay.
Are there going to be any, uh, you sent a copy of the license application, but are there going to be any physical changes to the location or to the scheduling?
No.
About, about how many venues do you do a year roughly? A couple of months?
Yeah, probably like ten-ish. We'll have like live acoust, acoustic music or a speaker to come and talk about the history of agriculture.
Yeah, oh, the, uh, as far as the venues go, even the, the venue that we're getting, that we're proposing or the entertainment bylaw we're proposing, um, any educational stuff to do with a farm, like if you bring somebody in for a, a farm tour for, or educate about farm stuff, in, in a nutshell, wouldn't be, would be exempt. Any kind of educational stuff, like they're really going after the live entertainment and the food trucks that would be coming in.
What if there's a microphone at the event?
Pardon?
I thought that if it was, if it was educational and there was like a podium, that's okay.
Oh, what, what?
A podium, like a microphone?
Yeah, if you have, if you have a speaker, that's fine, it's.
Just music.
Yeah. It, it, it's, it's, it's the entertainment, it's truly the entertainment and the food trucks and the beverage trucks that we're trying to address. Not so much somebody coming in and trying to, if you're, you're doing, you do some of both, okay, and that's fine. For what you do, what you're doing, from what, May, I only live a few miles away from you, so I see it fairly often when you do something, anything that you are doing, you would be certainly able to continue to do, it wouldn't have, would virtually have no effect on you. Okay? Um, once the bylaw is in and passed, but probably, uh, won't be until, well, after the annual town meeting in May and stuff like that, but just to put you at ease, it's not going to put any undue hardship on you and it won't prevent you from doing anything that you're doing today because you're, you're, how do you call it, you're a low-key operation compared to some other stuffs. Okay, so we're not, we're not trying to, first of all, we wanted to promote the farm use and what you people are doing and we want to keep you in business because we want to keep the open space. So we're not trying to penalize you in any way, shape or form, we're just trying to get some, there've been some issues, uh, in a nutshell, with some events, not necessarily in Hadley, but out of state where, well, food trucks have exploded and people have been killed. And because they never went to the fire department or the fire chief to get the proper permits and their stuff that they were doing was ill, was not in accordance with NFPA. So those are the things we're trying to keep and get a handle on, okay? Just so you'll know that this is not just, we're trying to control certain things, there is good reason what we're trying to do this. Um, one of the issues, I think one of the things was in Philadelphia, uh, but there have been several types of these explosions in the United States. Some people had been killed and some others have been truly very injured. So we don't want that to happen. Okay?
Oh, and, and we have never had a food truck. Um, we're just looking at live music.
Yeah, you have your own onsite, your own onsite kitchen, so you're, you're, you're in a different category, um, like a few of the other ones that are similar, you, you cooks, um, what you call it, North Abbey Sugar Shack, you all have your own onsite kitchen and you do your own, you're, you're, you, you fall under a different set of the building code, you've been compliance in day one. So, um, I'd make a recommendation that we simply let Barstow Farm continue on doing what they're doing.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we'll get a letter out to the, uh, what do you call it, licensing department tomorrow, by tomorrow, and they can get you your permit or your license or whatever it's called, okay?
Thank you for your time and for the clarification.
Thank you, okay, good luck. What's the, what's, you know, I got the address, we got the permit, yeah. Next up, Mr. Dwyer?
Yeah, next up, I was, uh, next one in was Samantha, I'm not sure if that's for a question for the planning board or for the upcoming public hearing or for something else? Samantha?
Just for Peter, for Peter, okay?
Uh, Peter and Alan, uh, are here for, um, the discussion of Colony Drive.
Okay. Okay.
And, uh, M, Ike is here for the special permit.
Right.
For the home occupation.
Right, okay, um, since I think the, um, the home occupation might be the shorter one of the two, we'll go for that one first. And I'll read the notes as it appeared in the Gazette. The Halle Planning Board will conduct a Zoom public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty-one, twenty-three, beginning at six forty-five PM. Purpose of the hearing is to review the application of Emily Ike for a special permit to conduct a home occupation at five Loriane Lane. Said home occupation is a private therapy practice. Plans are available by emailing planning@halleMA or visit town clerk's office during normal business hours, published twice in the Gazette, James, uh, twice in the Gazette, January twenty-three and thirty. And with that, Ms. Ike, you can, you're up, you can explain what you want to do.
Great, um, so I am looking to start a private practice, I'm a pelvic floor therapist, it would be out of one room in my home. Um, we have plenty of parking and had sent over the parking plan done by, um, Randy Eisner. Um, and I also emailed over a photo today of the six by twelve inch sign that I put up to designate parking in our driveway.
Okay. Are you on Sore or Septic?
Uh, I'm on Sore.
Oh, you're on, Loriane is on Sore, okay. Yeah, let's see, address again, Loriane, what, what number?
Five.
Five. The only, I got a couple of phone calls and they simply asked, there were the, the, I guess there were, we call them butters, that they had some questions about parking. And the only concern anybody raised was parking on the street. And I said, parking on the street is not permitted. And he says, what happens? I says, the parking on the street must be one hundred percent contained on the individual's property. If they park on the street, I'm not going to say it's never going to happen, but if it happens on any kind of a continuous basis, you call the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, and they could actually lose their license to operate with a special permit. He can address that. And I says, and they says, really? I says, yes, I said, well, if it's, I said, the idea of a home occupation is to be virtually invisible except for the occasional cars they're going to see. And he says, oh, other than the, the parking on the street, that was the only concern I had. When I told them about the conditions, they were good. Nobody else had a concern.
Great, glad to hear that.
So.
Is there any license required, uh, that we know of, Jim? Uh, are you a recognized therapist and do you have a license and does it have to be displayed and is the board of health have to be involved?
Um, I do have a license, it is displayed in my treatment room. Um, board of health does not need to be involved. I have proper insurance and all of that, so should be.
Okay, what about handicap accessibility?
Um, so at this time, my space is not handicap accessible, um, but the plans in the future are to move it downstairs in the next, you know, five years.
Mister, Mister. Mister Tom, does, does she need to be handicap accessible?
Yes, the, um, public is welcome, so the, you know, if somebody was to bring up the issue, um, or if you did substantial work, it would trigger it, you know, at that time.
Okay.
I can also offer home visits for folks if that's something that is a barrier to care. Um, so there's, even if it's not in the physical building, I'm able to travel.
Okay, that's a great thing to offer so that it covers everyone, especially you, if they got brought up.
Yeah, that's, that's not part of the zoning, uh, of the zoning bylaw, but it's more or less so that you know and we all know what's, what's required down the road to be aware.
Yep.
Well, does that?
Awesome, thank you.
Does that put us from, of voting on this and we're going to leave it up to the building inspector or is it not going to be permitted?
Say it again now?
Well, it's not handicap accessible and usually most businesses are, and it's either for the patient or for the staff that would be working there. And, uh, if it's not handicap accessible, do we, we probably should not approve it.
If it's not handicap accessible, as to my knowledge, that is not a zoning bylaw issue. That is a building inspection issue.
That's, that's kind of my question.
And the building inspector is the one that will make that determination. Um, sounds like he's willing to let it, because he has plans to do something in the reasonable future, he may be amenable, but that is going to be his call.
And, and recall, I think we approved one of these on, a similar business on Sunrise Drive, and we didn't bring up the issue of handicap accessibility.
That might be, yeah, we, we, we wanted, we want, we, we kind of want everybody to know what's going on, but it's not really, it's not really a zoning issue, it's more or less to an alert, if you would, um, of what will be required or is required within a reasonable period of time. It's just this person can apply, actually, um, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure if that's really satisfied the handicap issue, but since they can travel to the first, the handicap potentially have handicap persons, uh, residents, then that takes some of the, might take some of the burden off of her.
So if the Starbros, uh, Association, uh, kind of objects to her doing the business, uh, would it be, would it be shut down?
Because we have no choice at that point, right, but it, I mean, she has an alternative that should work. It's, it's just that that one person is, you know, comes forward, that it wasn't, you know, accessible.
This is a business risk.
No, I, I think it's more than a business risk, Michael, and, uh.
It, it, but it's beyond the purview of the zone bylaws, all I'm saying.
Okay, but I think we have to make her available of all the issues we possibly.
I, I, well, yeah, I mean, within reason, we're not, we're not attorneys and we don't need to be giving her every piece of legal advice on what she needs to do.
Hey, all right.
Mister Dwyer will slap our hands for that.
We do have a clause that I've added to the standard language that the applicant and/or owner is responsible for ADA compliance.
All right.
If required.
If required, good.
So it's not our responsibility, you know, we're, uh, yes, we're flagging it for.
Yeah.
Okay. For the applicant.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Hearing none? Mister Dwyer?
Sure. That's, so I'll make a motion to grant the application for a home business special permit. Uh, project is in harmony with general purposes and intent of the bylaw, not detrimental to the established or future character of the neighborhood, will be conducted according to the submitted plans. Following conditions, uh, home occupation shall clearly be incidental and secondary to the residential purpose and should be conducted in such a way that does not give an outward appearance of a business, except for, uh, specifically allowed for signage and parking. Only one home business per residential property and shall be conducted by the principal practitioner who occupies the main building as abonified residence with no more than two other persons, whether full-time, part-time or temporary, engaged in the occupation. Members of the immediate family residing in the building shall not. Members of the immediate family residing in the building shall not be counted as employees for this purpose. No home business shall occupy more than forty percent of the gross combined floor area. Uh, or more than four hundred square feet total, whichever is less. Uh, one sign per lot may be displayed, either attached to the structure or, um, at street, not to exceed two square feet. Um, not illuminated internally or externally nor backlit. Incidental goods ma- may only be offered for sale if the special, uh, permit expressly permits it. So that raises a question, will you be selling related products to your cus- to your patients?
No.
Okay, will you have any signage beside the parking sign?
No.
No, no, really?
Okay.
The hours of client visits, uh, shall be expressly stated. And in no case shall the hours extend earlier than eight A M. or later than nine P M. What hours are you aiming for?
Eight to six.
Okay. Uh, you get regular deliveries of products or materials?
No.
Uh, you're not in accessory structure? Uh, no, uh, obnoxious, toxic, or hazardous odors. Uh, no noise in excess of normal household noise, no storage of hazardous materials. All employee parking shall be on site. Uh,
No on-street parking?
Hmm?
Should we add no on-street parking?
It's client, uh, on-street parking is, um, with a client, uh, parking shall be a minimum of two vehicles per lot. The, uh, way the bylaw reads, on-street parking is permitted, provided said parking must be within the frontage property line of the home business residence. So if you have overflow that, um, for any reason, as long as they park in front of you, that's okay. If they're in front of your neighbor, that's not okay.
Uh, but that was one of the complaints that I received over the phone. They said that people are gonna be swinging wide and trying to get by, they're gonna drive on someone's adjacent lawn. So this, you think that's?
That, that seems like an enforcement issue for the police department if someone is driving on a lawn.
Well, she has asked, actually, I had, you don't have, do you have any employees?
No.
No, she has adequate parking on her site for the car, for the vehicles.
I think given what we've faced in the past, that, uh, we should really address that on-street parking. If it's a business, it should contain the parking on property site rather than usually.
That's what the plan has is there is, I'm seeing one patient at a time, a maximum of five patients a day, and I have a designated space.
Yeah, we can't change the zoning bylaw here. It's what, it is what it is. One of the house.
What is something, something to be aware for the next, for the next, for the future, we should look at it.
Will you have any, uh, additional lighting?
Uh, no.
Uh, all special permits for home businesses are non-transferable and are issued to the applicant for a specific home business. Um, no landscaping changes, no spillover of light. Uh, the approval is subject to approval of other boards if and as required, including the Conservation Commission, had the Board of Health, the, um, had the Water Commissioner, Sewer Commissioner, Select Board, they're all, they're all three. Um, uh, any project changes directed by other boards must be reviewed by the planning, uh, must be approved by the planning board. Um, the applicant and or owner is responsible for ADA compliance. The applicant and or owner is responsible for fire code compliance. Um, and that's it.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Make that motion.
I made the motion, do you?
Made the motion.
Second.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero one. So you're all set, Mister Dwyer will get that written up. Uh, there is a twenty-day appeal period once it gets filed with the town clerk. And on the twenty-first day, you go and see the building inspector and wherever other board you might, or go and just go and see other boards in the meantime, but on the twenty-first day, you theoretically could start your business.
Great. Thank you so much.
There's twenty-one days from filing with the town clerk, not from tonight, so it'll take me a while to get, you know, a week or so to get this filed.
Great.
Okay. Good luck.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up.
Next is, uh, just Colony Estates. I will not be.
Right, Colony Estates. The inclusionary idea, payment in lieu, payment in lieu. After our last, welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Couple of times that we've discussed, um, any other comments or ideas about the payment thing? Like I said, last time we, last couple of times we talked about it, the planning board kind of has basically two choices. One is to charge a very realistic fee of what it would cost to create a unit which will be exorbitantly high. And the other one would be to charge a that, that exorbitantly high fee would therefore probably very much discourage any payment for the payment in lieu. The other one is to charge a more modest fee and encourage payments for the payment in lieu. And Mister Dwyer and I are kind of in favor of the more modest charge. I'm not sure where the other members sit on that idea.
I think that we set the minimal amount per unit, per, uh, house built, and that's twenty-four thousand dollars.
We haven't talked about any minimum, but yeah, we're, we're, you're, you're probably.
Well, I don't know what you mean by modest. I have no idea what you mean by modest.
Neither do I at this point in time, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, but it's not going to be, you know, it's gonna probably be somewhere around twenty-four to thirty thousand dollars per unit. That's my opinion. Um, the high fee could very well be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Not per unit.
Per required, no, per required, uh, you, per required unit. In other words, if you build.
Yeah, alright, okay, well.
If you build six, if you build six buildings, you gotta put in one unit. That would be the fee for one unit. Whereas the twenty-four to thirty thousand dollars, instead of hundreds of thousands, would be one fee for the six units of twenty, somewhere in a thirty thousand plus range.
So six times thirty.
I'm not sure it'd be six times thirty.
Well, over here where I live, it was twenty-four thousand dollars per unit. Six times twenty-four.
I believe, I believe that was for each unit required. I'm not sure, was it six? Mister Dwyer? You, you.
Required, come on.
When, when the fees were paid on the East Street Commons, was that twenty-four thousand dollar fee for each unit constructed? I mean, each, each of the thirty-four units paid that, or was that thirty thousand dollars for each? Uh, inclusionary unit?
That was, uh, it was the, the twenty, I, I, I'm not entirely sure if it differed based on the number of, uh, bedrooms in a unit or not, but that was for every unit that Barry sold, he contributed a sum towards his requirement, which was for, I think, four affordable units.
Okay.
So it's twenty-four thousand, basically.
Again, that was based, uh, you, it, as you recall, that as as you were dealing with this, uh, and I was participating in that one, there was a lot of back and forth because we, we were sort of doing it on the fly. Um, so, um, you know, that's, that's what we worked out.
Peter Jelenis just said it was, the fee was three hundred fifty thousand dollars in their thirty-five units.
But I think.
But is that in our notes anyplace or in our minutes?
Yeah, I see that came up in the chat.
Yeah, what, no, that is told and he's paid the date, or is there coming some more?
Uh, that is the total that we expect to receive. We.
Three fifty.
I think we received something like two hundred thousand.
Okay, okay.
A couple of years ago, and then there haven't been any sales since then.
Okay.
Alright, I think we've got to figure out exactly what our history shows us before we can talk about what's modest or not modest or burdensome.
Mister, Mister, Mister Seawald.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Good evening. Um, so, let me just, um, step, step this back for a second. Your bylaw is quite clear. For a payment in lieu, you're supposed to have regulations pursuant to which you are charging these fees. You don't have those regulations. You don't have a, you don't have a bylaw that has produced any affordable units to speak of. Uh, and other than Barry Roberts, there hasn't been any payments. And so I, I'm, I'm here to suggest that there's a fundamental flaw in your bylaw. And, you know, you can tell that the bylaw is flawed because you're having so much trouble administering it and applying it. May I suggest that the proper way to do, um, uh, affordable housing zoning is not with a stick, but with a carrot. And so, um, what other communities do, and with the modern way to do this, is to offer additional units, some of which would be affordable um, by reducing area, reducing frontage, so it's, um, incentive zoning. But you don't have that.
Or I don't think we're here to discuss what we should or.
Well, can, can I, can I just? Can, can I just?
Let him speak.
Can I just finish my, what, what I have to say? I won't take long. And, um, so, you know, I can see you here pulling numbers out of the air, just pulling numbers out of the air. And the truth is, uh, I've heard this board over the last forty years, three of whom I am, whose faces I am looking at were on this board thirty-five years ago. When I've heard you say, there are no precedents set. Over and over again, you guys say there's no precedent set, so now you want to go back to Barry Roberts, uh, development and use it as a precedent. The truth is, your, your, uh, your stick zoning doesn't work and you don't have any regulations for payments in lieu, which you've had on the books now for many, many years. So let me just suggest that I, I, and I've been in this business, as, as the three of you know, I've been in this business for almost forty years, and I've been a municipal lawyer for almost forty years. I've taught municipal law and land use planning both at Winnick Law and at UMass. I know about, uh, planning law, and I know about the constitutional requirements of planning law. And it is patently unconstitutional to require Mister Jelenis to give away some of his land in order to get a subdivision approved. It's patently unconstitutional. It's a taking. And that's why we have moved from i- i- the stick form to the carrot form. The, the, uh,
Why, excuse me, why do you have these?
Can I finish, please?
Why do you have these?
Well, he's making.
So what I would like to do.
I think you're out of line.
A- and so, I, I'm not out of line. I have a right to represent my client and he's entitled to due process.
Tell us what, I, don't tell us what's constitutional and not.
Are you a constitutional lawyer? Because I am.
Neither are you, neither are you.
I am.
Miss, miss, miss.
UMass.
Big deal.
Mike, Mike, let him finish speaking.
So the, the bottom line is that there is an inflection point at which it no longer makes sense for Peter to be paying into your trust fund, and it makes sense for him to challenge your bylaw. And I'm trying to avoid that, so I'd like to get Peter to a number that everyone can live with. And hundreds of thousands of dollars is not gonna do it. It's simply not gonna do it. We're nowhere close to where we will get to a place where neither party is happy. I have money to offer you. I can offer you forty thousand dollars immediately. And, and this will be done. But the truth is, you have a problem with your bylaw because you can't create affordable units. And you can't get, you don't have regulations, uh, for your trust fund because you can't figure out what the standards are. And so I'm willing, you know, and Peter is willing to write you a check for forty thousand dollars for a release. And I think that's more than fair. Given that you don't have any standards to apply. And, you know, this, this idea that you're just gonna pick hundreds of thousands of dollars. Where does that number come from?
This is just like. Will we comment now, first of all?
Uh, yes.
Okay, number one comment. We had, uh, close to twelve percent affordable housing units. That's the highest in Happy Valley. It's higher than, it was higher than Amherst, higher than Northampton. So don't tell us how to zone our town, because I think we've done a commendable job for affordable housing. Where do you live? I mean, what town?
I live in Northampton. We're also over ten percent.
We have a greater percentage than Northampton and Amherst. And, and how about all our surrounding communities that, so nevertheless, we do fulfill our commitment. And what we're trying to do with this inclusionary zoning is trying to, uh, make sure that we do maintain the over ten percent. So what we probably should have done is that require the developer to put a unit for, on that property, because, uh, with inflation now, whatever you contribute, it's not gonna be anywhere near satisfying a single unit of affordable housing. So, uh, that, that's kind of my editorial.
I kind of agree, and excuse me for losing my temper there, Mister Seawald. I had a good constitutional law teacher at Amherst College named Earl Latham. I don't know if you know the name or not, that was many moons ago. But I don't see how we can accept forty thousand dollars. And so the other options are to build an affordable unit or to give us an affordable unit.
But your bylaw doesn't require to provide an affordable unit because it applies to subdivisions. Mister, you know, Peter doesn't build units.
He builds.
Subdivides. He doesn't build units. He's not a builder. And so to tell Peter that he has to build a unit, how's he gonna do that?
So read, read the bylaw.
I did read the bylaw, that's what concerns me. And, and then your bylaw requires that in perpetuity, he be responsible for monitoring the affordability of this. I mean, when does that end?
That, that, you're right, it's a, it's a, it's a monst-
It's a monstrosity, Michael. It's a monstrosity.
Yeah, it is.
It does not work.
What we've got, and we can't change it while we're sitting here. We've got what we have, and we have to live with it, and quite frankly, if we allow, uh, Mister Jelenis to give us forty thousand dollars, then I think we gotta go back to the Roberts deal and send a lot of that money back.
When, when Mister Jelenis applied for the subdivision, I believe the payment in lieu fee had been removed from the inclusionary bylaw at the time, so his only choice was to provide a affordable unit somewhere, either onsite or offsite. The affordable payment law was reinstated only recently when we reinstituted the, uh, what you call it? The fund. I believe.
Affordable housing trust fund.
I believe I'm correct, I believe I'm correct on that.
Ah, you are. There was a prior, there was a prior provision for payment in lieu, it was removed and replaced.
Right, for the reason you see, for, for some of the reasons you say, that it didn't seem fair for the developer to be required to, in perpetuity, be supplying and be responsible for one or two affordable units. So the payment in lieu was put back in place. Yes, we are struggling with trying to get an equitable payment. There's no doubt about that. Because there are towns in the eastern part of the state that we, that have various, uh, payment formulas. Some of them are upwards of several hundred thousand dollars per affordable unit. And I agree with you. That is a bit high. Leave it at that statement. However, we're trying to make it a more equitable statement and bringing it down to a more le- uh, another level where we are. le- another level where we are encouraging the payments um to be not so extraordinary. And yeah, we are struggling with that. There's no question about it because we have disagreements on what it should be. And the best scenario we have is to compare it right now to what, as a basis, what Mr. Roberts has paid for the East Street Commons. And he paid on a, basically a, a uh, he's calling each dwelling that was sold a unit. That's fair. Okay, that's what he calls the unit because the state doesn't, the state doesn't uh define a unit either. It can be one studio apartment. It can be three or four bedrooms. As far as, as far as we've read the, the state in information, if you disagree, let me know that a unit is one unit, however many bedrooms it may have. That is not defined. Okay, so we're not that, that's also where we were struggling. One unit can be a house. It can be a little studio apartment. And so in this case, Mr. Jelinek and others have put up houses. Well, we're, we're trying to squeeze too much into the bag here. Um, because we're not having apples and apples comparison all the way across the board. So you know, we're not trying to in any way, shape or form punish anybody. We're trying to come up with a formula. We're not a formula. Yeah, I guess it'd be a formula that is reasonable on both the plant, the town's part and the developer's part. And that's where we stand.
We're not, not. Right, but you haven't done that. And so you have no basis for, for charging because you haven't done that. You don't have the regulations that the bylaw requires in order to establish an amount.
That's.
I, I understand that, but, but so where do you get the number that you want to apply to, to Mr. Jelinek? And so let, let me just go also back to, to, you know, the non precedent, which is Barry Roberts. So he's got three hundred and fif- thirty five units. And he's paying three hundred and fifty thousand. That's ten thousand a unit. So where does, so where do, so my client's got seven units or eight units, where does, where does hundreds of thousands of dollars come from? Barry Roberts is paying ten thousand a unit.
Barry Roberts went to the zoning board of appeals for a variance on the payment formula. Because when he put the, when he put the bylaw in, it said one thing, we changed it because we, the, the town wouldn't approve the affordable fund. The finance committee, so we had a bylaw that said you could make a payment, but they wouldn't allow us to create a fund. And so Barry Roberts was approved kind of under that bylaw. Shortly afterwards, we took the wording out of there. So when he applied for his uh unit, when he applied for the senior housing, he went, he was under the grandfather clause, grandfather part of the bylaw where it says you could make a payment in lieu, but that didn't even exist because we didn't even have an affordable housing trust fund. And it took us, I want to say ten years to get the wording for an affordable trust fund. We finally got the trust fund. We put the wording back into the bylaw. And we probably shouldn't have. And we should have left it the way it was and forced any developer to put in and to build an affordable unit or convert an affordable unit.
Unconstitutional, Jim. It's just unconstitutional to.
The town council approved it. So that's, that's your opinion. I'm not going to disagree with you. But the town council and attorney general approved all that stuff. So, yeah, we made a mistake. We shouldn't have put the affordable fee in there until we had a formula.
So now that we are where we are, how do we get ourselves out of this? That's what I really.
Can I just go back for a second?
We're trying to, go ahead.
I'm trying to be very careful to not actively participate in this, but I did want to pull up the actual decision of the zoning board of appeals, which was basically uh to allow Barry to make a payment in lieu when the bylaw didn't allow it at the time. That's all the ZBA really did at that time.
Sorry, it didn't, it didn't set a fee.
It didn't, it didn't set a, uh, it didn't set a formula. It just set a uh, um, it just said that it was a hardship that had the housing authority, which was mentioned in the bylaw, was not prepared to administer the affordable units. So um, he was allowed to uh proceed with out uh complying with the affordability on the basis of his promise to make a payment. And then we took in actual amendment was um. It's, it's really, it's short. This is just what, what we decided. We amended site plan approval. Um. On the basis of his variance to allow him to make a payment in lieu, we revised site plan approval to allow him to contribute three hundred and fifty thousand dollars incrementally from the sale of each building to be contributed to the happy affordable housing trust fund upon its creation.
Where did the twenty four thousand dollar number come from? Is just an error?
I don't know. That was the number you gave us. I don't know where it came from.
Uh, I got it from a closing I did.
Okay.
In um, on East Street Commons, and that was the amount that was held out. And uh, again, I, I'm not sure.
Well, clearly that number was not what Barry did, did. So listen, we've got to make a decision and put this thing, get it off the stove. And so the Roberts Development paid ten thousand dollars a unit four years ago. Uh, we're talking about six units here. Let's, let's assume ten percent inflation, which is probably not the case. So let's say eleven thousand dollars times, times six, sixty six thousand dollars and I'd vote for that.
Can I have just a minute to talk to my client? I mean, let's.
I don't know about you guys, but uh, well, we clearly, this four twenty four thousand dollars was a bad number.
Yeah.
So I, I would, I would take eleven thousand dollars per unit, but you know, the board has to decide that. I can't decide that.
Okay, you, you talked to your client aboard and then we'll just, what, what do you feel about eleven thousand for this particular one, Joe?
Per unit.
Per, per unit, yeah. So a total of sixty, total of home in a mini.
We've, we've got to make some kind of compromise and obviously we do need some regulations and uh this is not working. So uh, I think.
Oh, sure, it's not working. I agree a hundred percent. I mean, Mr. Seawall, I agree it's not working. But our town council approved it. And the twenty four thousand dollars, I apologize, was a bad number that I don't know where that came from. But uh, if it's ten thousand per unit, we'd check it up to eleven and we, you know, I think we spent enough time on it.
Yeah.
For, for this particular item, it may be worthwhile.
Correct.
You want to participate in eleven thousand dollar bill? You want to exempt yourself on it?
I, I will, I'm not going to participate in, in this one. I I'd like the concept, I, I'd like to participate in the concept of a payment in lieu formula, but I can't participate in this one.
That's fine. Okay, I just want to may, want to be clear. That's fine.
So my, my, my client will agree to a flat fee payment of sixty six thousand dollars. Will agree to that.
Okay, how many units does he have? He only has six units, right? Or seven?
He's got seven units and so far and um, but he's not going to go any higher. I'm going to tell you right now, this is above what he authorized me. I came in here with fifty thousand dollars in my pocket. That was.
I thought you said forty.
Uh, well, of course, Michael, you got to leave. You think I'm going to give you my, my bottom line number?
Well, then my, my eleven thousand dollars per unit was, was not correct either. We haven't voted on.
And you said sixty six and I accepted it. And so.
No, 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 no.
Listen, we both have a problem. We both have a problem and this is a reasonable solution to it. That's what I'm trying to.
We're, we're, we're trying.
How many more units is he going to put in?
Attorney. None. He's done.
I, I said in the beginning, we, we shouldn't have done what we've done. We've done it. We're going to live with it. We're going to correct it and let's make something out of this where we don't want to, we don't want to, we're not trying to bankrupt the poor guy that's putting.
No, of course not. I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept sixty six thousand dollars as a payment in lieu of building an affordable unit or giving us an affordable unit. And that's all that Mr. Jelinek swallow on, on Colony Estates.
I second that.
Mr. Seawald.
But we need a board member to second that.
Good try. Just don't vote.
We found again, one, one fee, one check.
Sixty six thousand.
Fifty six thousand.
You second that?
I'll second it.
You second Mr. Michael, Mr. Sardzinski's motion. Good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we better do a roll call here. Michael.
Epstein.
Mister, what's that? Mr. Zagradnik?
Aye.
Mr. Maximowski, aye. Mr. Dwyer?
Epstein.
Epstein. Motion passes three, zero, with two, one absent and one nine participating.
Okay. You know what the Shreveport cases were?
Yes.
The Shreveport cases?
Yeah.
Which ones are those? Maybe I know them by a different name.
That's where the, that's when the US Congress decided that the United States had the right to regulate interstate commerce because this is kind of similar to this going from Louisiana to Texas. They charge one fee and going the other way, they charge a different fee.
Right. Do, do you know about the Nolan Dolan cases?
No.
Eight. Nolan Dolan cases basically say that when you are exacting a fee for a discretionary permit, um, you have to show both a direct nexus and substantial proportionality between this development and the harm that you say was created. And so you would have to show if we went to court that Mr. Jelinek caused a problem that he has to fix. It's not, so the, the issue here is that this is a townwide problem of affordable housing. And the town needs to solve it. And that's what happens when you do incentive zoning. As I said, he got eight lots. If you said, okay, Mr. Jelinek, you're getting twelve lots in the same area that we put those eight lots, you get two, we get two for affordable housing. That is constitutional because it's, it's, it, it gives a benefit to the developer.
You, you, well, now that the eminent barrister is on his soapbox, I would like to say that the town of Hadley has a uh, a obligation to feed the people as opposed to house the people. We have some of the best agricultural land in the valley. And this is our primary responsibility to feed the people, not to build houses all over it. So
Yeah.
is one of the reasons we have the zoning that we do. Plus, we do not have sewer all over town where you cannot have cluster zoning or apartments. So we do have some limitations and we do have some legitimate reason for the zoning that we have.
And that's why twenty five percent of the land is used for raising tobacco.
Well, the truth is that the state has imposed on you the obligation of housing because you have to have ten percent affordable housing and that's what you're trying to avoid.
Already, we.
I know you, I, I know you did, but the problem is other housing is being built. And so the number is going down if you don't keep imposing affordable housing. I, I just.
Attorney Seawall, you know what Northampton's uh housing number is, affordable housing?
It's over ten percent.
It is?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, and we do it by incentive. And we also, you know, we have the benefit and I, and I recognize we have the benefit of having, you know, hap come in and build a, a four story building in downtown and we've got a lot of affordable housing. Those are all affordable housing units. So we have that advantage that you don't have that we have, you know, we had two um affordable housing unit, apartment buildings built on Pleasant Street. But you know, and so we put in CPA money and we put in some seed money, some feasibility studies. And that's what this money should go to, you know, feasibility studies and you know, seed money to get things started. Um, but uh, I appreciate uh the back and forth. Uh, nice to meet you, Michael, and I'm sure we'll have a, an opportunity to speak again. And I, I, I also, I also have to give a lot of, no, wait a second, before I go, I have to give kudos to you three who have been doing, you guys have been on this board close to forty years. It's got to be close to forty years.
No, I.
Am I wrong?
Well, I'm forty years. Joe is about forty seven. Mr. Dwyer is like thirty six.
I know, as long as I've been practicing, you've been doing this and I want to thank you for doing that. Because some, you know, it's, it's a valuable service you're performing and I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen, thank you so much. Good night.
Okey dokey. All right, um, next up, endorsement of housing production plan that we, I sent out for that uh PBPC study that was done. Comments on that? The plan, the select board approved that the beginning of February. Planning board needs to approve it for it to go on and be uh to the Department of Health, DDO, HOD, whatever, DOHCD or whatever they're called. Any comments on the housing play, production plan?
I don't have any uh specific ones. Uh, it was discussed at the uh Housing and Economic Development Committee meeting last week. And one of the uh members of that committee had some technical questions about a couple of the charts and whether they were saying what they thought, what they said they were saying. Um, I did give him Ken Comey's uh email and I think I gave, I may not have given him your email, Jim. Uh, so he could raise that directly. Um, and I do appreciate, I had to leave early at the last meeting. Um, uh, and Mark's not here now, so I don't know if there is uh, uh, we want to put it off or is it important to vote on it?
I mean, I'd like to have Mark here as part of the, as part of the process, but what I'd also like, even if we don't approve it tonight, I would like to get at least everybody that's here, their opinion as to, you know, does it look good? Will you approve it? Do you have other questions? So if we approve it, if we approve it at our next meeting, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But I just want to get to our next meeting and say, oh, what about this? What about this? What about this? I'd like to get everything out of the four of us tonight if you have any concerns or don't like it so that we have a chance to get it approved at our next meeting. Michael, Joe or Bill, any?
I, I had no. Good, good job. I had nothing to add.
Okay. I mean, the, the, the report is like forty two pages long and somewhere around thirty five or thirty six pages are facts. And the result of the survey, there's only a few pages in the back that have recommendations. Some of the recommendations have already been completed by the planning board and the other ones uh are very similar to the master plan. The planning board shall consider that, shall consider that. So things that we should look at, but nothing that says Hadley must do this or Hadley must do that. So does it look like something that we, that you would approve at the next meeting?
I'll, I'll go over to get a, it's looked pretty good. You're right, a lot of facts. So.
Yeah, I'll go along with it.
And, and the, the, some of the facts, like I said, have, they, they, when I, I presented them to the selectmen probably in uh January. And it, it shocked a lot of people, including me, that the ad, the median income in the town of Hadley is just under eighty seven thousand dollars a year. That's thirteen thousand dollars higher than, than the Hampshire County and it's higher than the state. So it, it answers a lot of questions as to why when Hadley applies for grants, we don't get them. They consider Hadley a wealthy community.
Well, you got a lot of wealthy farmers here.
One of the wealthiest in Western Mass. I mean, those are facts. Like I said, there's a lot of facts in there that, that you know, in Joe's comment, one third of Hadley is aquifer. Um, and because of that, that has a lot to do with sewer and septic. When you have the aquifer, you need a minimum under title five. So many acres or so many square feet of uh, of so many square. of so many square feet of property for basically, I think it's each bedroom, right, Tom? So you know, you, you do have these zoning is forty thousand square feet. And it's a maximum of four bedrooms. Somebody wants to put in a five-bedroom house, normally it's not permitted and they want us to reduce our size for cluster. How do you put in when you're on septic and Hadley has only got septic in, in select areas and the other, most, most of the uh, aquifer, I mean, a lot of the aquifer is over septic areas where there's no sewer. So how do you put, how you would even get close to putting cluster in when you don't have sewer and you need ten thousand square feet of uh, land for each bedroom? It, it's, the numbers just aren't going to work. And you know, you, you know, evidently Title Not, Title V and uh, the affordable part of the housing ELCD or whatever they're called, don't talk to each other very much. But you know, it's environmental stuff too. Anyways, okay. Thank you. So at the next meeting, they'll put it on so we can uh, a formula, a, a, adopt it, endorse it rather, accept it. Uh, I've put out some possible zoning articles for the town meeting. Um, I'll briefly go over them because you probably have a chance to really review them much. Um, one is, I know in the last meeting, we talked about the uh, entertainment uh, bylaw, a venue bylaw, and Joe asked a question about getting police and fire endorsement on that. Fire will absolutely stand behind us on those because I said at the beginning of the meeting, one of the reasons for those two bylaws, particularly the uh, the uh, food and beverage one is that there have been explosions of food trucks in other states where people have been killed. And for improper use, storage and whatever else it may be, piping of propane tanks. And there've been some various serious incidents. And the fire department does not want that to happen in Hadley. So he says, yes, he will, he'll, he'll ask to give facts and figures if we need it at a town meeting. I guess that kind of applies somewhat to the venue bylaw because they do have some similar things. They want to have it, they want to, they want a clearinghouse or a clear, a clearing board that would have some authority to make sure things are proper. And by going to the planning board on a zone bylaw, the, at least the applicant would know that they need to comply with NFPA, whatever it might be, police, whatever, chance to put their two cents in. It's not something they want to really regulate it. It's the matter of by, a zone bylaw. I think it, it is more of having a formal review required where everybody knows what's required for them to get their permits. And that includes even the building permit because it comes back and you know, suddenly somebody's got food trucks on a site and I didn't know that and then they go there and they find some problems. So enough said.
The uh, the one I have question on is the, the, the trailer one. It's uh, seems to dovetail into the trailers along the flood plain.
That, that is, that is exactly right. What's happened is the fifteen-foot side yard setback is fine. But on some of the parcels, a fifty-foot front yard setback seems, it's been, it's been, Mr. Quinlan has been getting some real uh, pressure as to why is the fifty feet, these are not permanent structures. They're only there for five or six months of the year. Why can't we be closer than fifty, than fifty feet to the front yard, which is a dirt road? And it would make his job a lot easier on doing the permits if we could go to cut it down to fifteen feet.
But uh, so, so still going to be one trailer per lot, right? And two trailers.
We, we no longer limit to one trailer per lot. We limited to how many, the number of trailers that'll fit according to NFPA and the fire chief and the building inspector.
Okay, but the, if, once you get into three trailers, now you're a trailer camp and that's.
Exactly. By law, so. That's not changing.
So it's maximum of two per lot then, and a third one has to go in for the trailer park where you need a sewer system, et cetera, et cetera. Correct. You can comply with the camper, campsite border health regulations with uh, porta potties, but they have to be. Not for the three. It said for the campsite regulations is, it's different. It, it also gets interesting because the campsite regulations apply to situations where people are paying to be there. So if you have five family members with five RVs, that's different than renting space to four other people.
It gets into some very complicated rentals versus free versus family-owned campsites. But you do need porta potties. One of the problems that the board of health and the building inspector is running into is that porta potties need to be registered. People are bringing in porta potties that aren't registered, that don't comply and they're, they're not good. Leave it at that. So by doing some of this stuff, it's, it's going to be, they're, they're, they want the people to put in a basically approved porta potty. Is that correct, Tom?
Yes. Yeah. In the application, they have to put down the company and all and, and it all has to, you know, board health checks to make sure that's correct before they sign off on it.
Yeah. We've got a very good, the board of health right now has a very good, highly competent porta uh, inspector. He only works part-time and from what I have seen and heard at meetings, I've heard of this person, he is on the ball like nobody we've had in, I don't know, when.
He is, he is being increased to full-time in the next fiscal year. And that, and that was a big problem because uh, even when Dick Kessier was out there doing inspections, he was doing inspections of some of the restaurants. And uh, um, was it Greg Mish was doing Title V? Um, no one was doing porta potties. No one was doing food trucks. And then uh, Dick lost reelection two years ago, maybe three now. Uh, there were no board of health inspections that I'm aware. I guess they had a contract inspector, but uh, no uh, no real inspection program for the last number, X number of years. And uh, that is, that is changing.
Yeah. This, this gentleman is, I'll just say this gentleman is very sharp.
His name?
He's on the ball. And he's caused, he's, he's, he's politely ruffled some flaps, some feathers and put it mildly.
Uh, Ben?
Ben Lippin, is it? Lippin?
Lipp, Lipton? Littman?
Lippin?
Lippman.
Littman, I think, isn't it?
He's been eligible in the restaurants especially.
Yeah. So, okay. Uh, another one of the possible potential bylaws is, uh, where am I? Um. From inspection, oh, three point one. And this was actually brought up by the building inspector. We have a bylaw and this is something. Mr. Zagradnik, four people living in a.
Yeah, that's all the, I forgot to bring, bring that up. That was somehow eliminated when we went the re-codification bylaw. No. It was, how was it eliminated?
There, the four, the four related persons is in the codification bylaw. I thought the word unrelated got dropped. I went all the way, you know that little tiny booklet that Bill Dwyer gave us? That's because the original zone bylaws are like twelve pages?
Yes.
That original bylaw does not say unrelated. It says four persons.
Oh, well, the next one, the next one did say unrelated.
Okay. I look back, I couldn't find unrelated in the bylaws.
Okay, I'll have to pull out my, my archive somewhere.
Okay.
But it doesn't matter. Uh, so we're going to put it in.
We're going to put it in. Yes. That's where that, that's why that's there because it, it's enough. Yeah. Um, the other one is, let's see, what is it? Thirteen point one, thirteen one is the Clara General bylaw, the venue, um, ag-related uh, bylaw for food trucks. And the bylaw for the food trucks that, there is a, I'm taking that, I think it's so far, I've been copying the town, city of Somerville, Somerville. And modifying that because they get into a whole bunch of baloney. And I'm not sure that's going to be, hope that'll be ready for this annual meeting. I'm hoping it will be. But it, I'm relating it to food and beverage truck, dispensing trucks to try to uh, basically get the, that'll be under a bylaw, a general bylaw, not a zone bylaw. And how they will be, where they'll be permitted and inspected.
Jim, I don't know if you picked this up in the meetings, but Somerville is where Ben had worked.
Oh.
And he is, he was saying today that uh, some of the things we're talking about are new to him, but food trucks, he's really on top of. So you might reach out to him for some uh.
Okay. I didn't really think of him from Somerville. I thought, okay, great. I will, I will definitely get his opinion on that, that one, when I get, when it's a little bit closer. What else we should include? Tom?
He's coming to our uh, bylaw meeting next time. He's coming at uh, ten thirty.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, he's coming and so is uh, there's somebody else. There's two people coming to that one.
Uh, from the police department at nine thirty. We have, coming.
Right, okay. Right.
And what are we going to do about the incursionary zoning bylaw? I mean, we can't let this thing keep drifting along here. It's, it almost gave me a heart attack tonight for Christ's sake.
Well, you, what, what did you?
We gotta do something about it. We can't just.
You've come up with a suggestion for the next meeting and I'll.
I think we should, I think we should just repeal it.
What you, what, okay, I have, I'll get the Sunderland bylaw and forward it to your, your people. And it's, in spite of what the eminent barrister with a constitutional background said, uh, the Sunderland bylaw is for older people and it is up to the responsibility of the developer to take care of all the paperwork, the interviewing of the applications, applicants and uh, submit it to all the necessary information to the state. So.
Was our, was our bylaw approved by the attorney general's office?
Yes, yes.
Correct me, is the attorney general now the governor of the state? Same one or different one?
Oh, this, it would have been a different one. That was probably Martha Coakley or even her predecessor.
It was approved by the state. So did they, would they allow something unconstitutional to go by or that?
We got to figure out what's going to work, Mike. And so I, I.
This, this can't go on like this.
Joe, get us, get us the email copy of the Sunderland bylaws so we can look at it.
I will.
Um. I'll forward it. Get a paper copy, give it to me. I'll scan and give it to everybody. We'll get it electronically.
I think I've got it on an email, Jim. I'll, I'll figure. I think it's available online.
Oh, it is? Okay. So yeah, we, we, we need to straighten this one out. We don't have anything pending, but it's going to come up again. We know it.
So the, another way around it is to do what uh, I think in Amherst, uh, it only kicks in in twelve or more units. So we have a really low threshold and even with that really low threshold, this one project was the only one that got snagged by it in the eight or nine years that it's been on the books.
Yeah, I'd like to have. Even if we go to twelve units, the issue's still going to be there.
Yeah, granted, yes.
Yes, the, just, it's just a bigger number. So whether it's a small, small subdivision or a big one, what we want to address is what is the right way to do this so that irregardless of subdivision size or development size, whatever you want to call it, we address it in a reasonable manner.
Well, I am, I'm glad, thank you, Bill, for clarifying how much was put in here at East Street Commons. Ten thousand per unit, not twenty four. That's a huge difference.
Yeah.
It's a huge.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if some of it might have been a catch-up or uh, yeah, I.
Well, I just wanted to put it. Bury it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, oh, invoices. Yes, wait a minute. I think I got an invoice to pay. Uh, no, let's wait until the next time. Because the only invoice I'm going to have, that we, we approved the uh, the two hearings we just had, the only other one coming up is going to be the, the legal notice for the two marijuana establishments review. That's not going to be until the middle of March. So let's address that either at that meeting or the next meeting. So we'll leave that one alone for now. So. Um, I have nothing else. Mr. Dwyer?
I don't have anything else.
Mr. Quinlan? No, anybody else? No? Motion to adjourn?
Don't move. I move with adjourned. Okay.
You gotta pick me up, Zeke?
Yes.
Both of you, want me to second it?
Seven fifty seconds.
With motion second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is history. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Alex.